Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the April 8th, 2019, Planning and Zoning Commission order. If we'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, it's the May 13th meeting. I was reading the wrong note. And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce all of the members of the Commission that are here this evening. To my far right is Jamie Hind, who's an alternate on the Commission. Next to Jamie is Jeff Kohan, Commission member. To my immediate right is James Fitzsimmon, also a Commission member. At the far end of this table is Steve Allenson, an alternate on the Commission. And to my immediate left is Rocco Madarazzo, who's the Secretary of the Commission. At the staff table to the lower left is Cynthia Kleist, who is the Recording Secretary. And next to Cynthia is Casey Hand, who is our Town Planner. I'm Jim Sechter, Chairperson of the Commission. Our next order of business is to approve the minutes of our April 8th, 2019 meeting. Are there any Commission members who would like to make any additions, corrections to the minutes before I ask for a motion to approve those minutes? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes of the April 8th meeting has submitted.
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kohan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions. Minutes are approved. Before we go to our first item on the agenda, there is just one announcement. Item number two on our agenda is a public hearing, special permit for electric vehicle charging station with associate equipment pad for SAI Group for Electrify America at 844 North Colony Road, the Walmart site. At the request of the applicant, that application will be heard this evening and will not be heard this evening as they're doing additional work on that application. And we anticipate that the application will be for us next month. Which brings us to our first public hearing. It's a special permit location of use for M. Moreno at 1254 South Colony Road, Unit Number Four. The applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for his presentation. And I'd ask Mr. Hind, until Mr. Benoit comes, if you would please be voting on the applications, with the exception of item number four, which is Shields Hotel, with Mr. Allenson had sat on that application at last month's meeting. So with that, if the applicant would please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
Evening Chairman. Attorney Joseph Sarantino for the applicant.
Mike?
Sure. Is that better? That one may not be on.
Yeah, I think there's a... Yeah. Actually, before you start, having a bad evening, before you start, Mr. Madarazzo, if you would please note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have a special permit 403-19, special permit location of use to allow an auto dealer's license for M. Moreno at 1254 Old Colony Road. We have a correspondence dated April 23rd, 2019, signed by Casey Hand, Town Planner. We have an interdepartmental referral referencing application 403-19 dated April 5th, 2019, signed by the Fire Marshal. And we have an inter-office memorandum to Casey Hand, Wallingford Town Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated May 8th, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. Now, if the applicant would please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
Thank you Chairman. Attorney Joseph Sarantino for Mr. Moreno. By way of introduction, Chairman, this is a 10,798 square foot building, currently zoned T-30. Right now, there's seven units at the building. The unit we're discussing today for the special permit request is Unit Two. The unit is approximately 1,500 square feet with two floors. The lower level of the unit is currently used right now as a tool storage space, and the upper level is currently used for personal office space and record keeping. The special permit is requesting approval so that Unit Two at this location can be used as a home base location for a Connecticut automobile dealer's license for a Connecticut vehicle export business. The vehicle export business is called KC Export LLC. Special conditions on this request would be that the location is going to be solely used for record keeping only for this business, and it will not be used to store or repair any vehicles whatsoever. It's simply so this is the first step in getting a Connecticut dealer's license on this application.
Thank you. Mrs. Hand, before we go to the Commission, do you have any comments on the application?
Just briefly, when this was converted from the plaza that it was before into the contractor's storage that it is now, one of the comments that was made at the time by the previous Town Planner was that there wasn't enough parking on the site, so a dealer's and repair's use would not be allowed here. So the reason that this would be okay is because of what Attorney Sarantino mentioned, which is that there is no sales or repairs to occur on the site, because there is very limited parking there.
Thank you. Commission members, with any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on the application? If so, please come forward and name an address. Seeing none, unless the applicant would like to make any further comments on the application, you're not obligated to. I'd, at this point in time, call for a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman?
No, from... First of all, I'd like to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I can motion we close the public hearing?
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kohan, voting beginning with Mr. Hind.
Yes to close.
Yes.
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 And yes. And now I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Commission approve a special permit application for location of use for Moreno to allow office use only in association with an automotive dealer's license at 1254 Old Colony Road, Unit Two, as shown on previously approved site plans. No site changes proposed. Entitled Site Plan Layout, Map Depicting Land, now informally 1254 Old Colony Road, Connecticut Route 71, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated December 30th, 2010, revised to 1/2611. Subject to the following conditions. Number one, to be used for office use only. No vehicles are to be stored or kept on the site except for the parking of personal vehicles of people working in the office. No repair or sales of vehicles to occur on site. Number two, the conditions outlined in a letter received dated 4/5/19 from the Sarantino Law Firm, addressed to the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission. Number three, comments of the Town of Wallingford Fire Marshal dated April 30th, 2019. And number four, comments of the Town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Senior Engineer dated May 8th, 2019.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kohan, voting beginning with Mr. Hind, please.
Yes to approve.
Yes.
Yes. And yes. Application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
And now, Mr. Hind is... Mr. Benoit's here. He'll continue on the other applications. And it brings us to item number three, old business, change of use, office and residential second floor for V. Dina Tally, 530 Center Street. Again, Mr. Madarazzo, if you please note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have memorandum to Casey Hand, Town Planner, from Janice Small Corporation Counsel, dated April 25th, 2019. We have a memorandum to Casey Hand, Town Planner, from Janice Small Corporation Counsel, dated April 30th, 2019. And we have some correspondence from Casey Hand, Town Planner, to Vincenzo Dina Tally, dated 5/8/2019.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. If the applicant would please introduce himself and then...
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Vincenzo Dina Tally. I'm here on behalf of the property owner, and I'm here tonight with John Walworth, Land Use Consultant, and Mr. Steve Lazarus, a licensed architect with offices here in Wallingford.
Good. Thank you. I think before we begin on your presentation, I think you've seen some of the correspondence from our Town Planner, as well as from our Corporate Counsel. So I guess, Mrs. Hand, if you please give some introduction as far as what the various correspondence is, and it's really a decision that the Commission would need to be made prior to going forward with the application.
Sure. So the application before you is to convert the upper story of the existing building, which is currently office use, into residential units. The question that has been raised that sort of underlies the application, so in order for kind of the applicant to know how to move forward, or in order for it to sort of be decided how this might or might not move forward, there is sort of an underlying question about how the parking requirement applies to this, and how the parking requirement gets... How the parking requirement... Yeah. So how the parking requirement gets applied to this particular proposal. So the new regulations that were adopted in 2017 for the Town Center require that the site be entirely... Whenever a new residential use is proposed, that the site be brought entirely into compliance with the new or the current parking requirements. So as part of that, the question came up in this particular case, there were some variances previously approved. So I should back up and say that in addition to the building, that's the subject of this application, which is 350 Center Street, a lot of people know it as the Old Town Hall Building. At some point in time, the property that Jay... The building that Jay Christians is in, and the building, the Fishbine Building, were incorporated, where they were all condoed together. So now, this building and both of those buildings are all on one piece of property, and they're a condoed organization. So under zoning, as you all are aware, we look at a property, not individual buildings. And that's commonplace. We run into that on Route Five. There are condoed groups of buildings. Again, we look at the property as a whole. So as part of the question that's come up here, so there were some previously approved variances, one of which is associated with the parking required for Jay Christians. And the, I think that the applicant's position is that that variance should still apply in the sense that, and I don't want to speak for the applicant, but in the sense that the variance, there were 32 parkings, 31 parking spaces required for the Jay Christians restaurant to go in. They represented that they had six available to them. So the position here is that only six spaces should be included in the parking calculation for the site. The position that I have taken is that the, or I guess the question is whether, is that the new regulations state that if you add residential units, which clearly we're going from zero to 10 here, that you're required to comply entirely with the new parking regulations. The other part of that question is, since it's a variance, how does that, how exactly does that apply? And again, when you have a variance approved, it's based on a very, a specific, exactly the situation at the time. So the specific combination of uses at the time. This proposal would have a different combination of uses. So this would change what was approved under the previous variance combination. So the question is whether or not, I guess the underlying question is whether or not the applicant has to apply the entire parking calculation, including the parking calculation for that entire restaurant or not. I think that the regulation, I mean, I, we were, I think most of us were there when we wrote that regulation, and I think the intention was that we're reducing our parking requirements to better account for the fact that there's on-street parking, and there are other things. There's public parking, there's shared parking, and so on and so forth. And the intention, as I remember it, was very clearly that if you're adding residential units, because parking demand for residential units differently applies than a lot of other types of uses, so for residential units, you have to have some parking for those units. So because that differently applies, if you were going to add residential units, you could do it. You could do it by right, but you had to bring your parking into compliance, into full compliance, and that's what the reg says. So the, I think that's the question that's before the Commission. I asked Attorney Small to weigh in on it. You have her memo. The other issue that she raised is, there were some other variances that were approved. One was in 2015, and those, both of those applied to this building specifically. The one from 2015 was never utilized because the product, that project didn't go forward. So the question there, or I think what she's looking for there from the applicant is, basically, or basically, that variance and this proposal can't live in the same roof. Like, they can't, they can't both exist at the same time because they contradict each other. So if this proposal is to move forward in some way, we also need a representation that that variance, or agreement from the applicant, that that variance is void. Because otherwise, we could run into this problem, which I think they do agree to that part. Because otherwise, we could run into this problem again, where it's sort of unintended consequences. So I think they're agreeable to that part. I think really the question is whether or not the, sorry, excuse me, whether or not the parking has to be brought into full compliance with today's requirements. Now, the good thing about that is that we did reduce the parking requirements a lot. So the difference in the parking, if they are required to come into full compliance, is not that painful. It would probably require them, and again, they would, the applicant would have to decide like what he wants to do, what approach he wants to take. But it would probably require him to utilize one of the special permit options, like a sharing option, or a fee-in lieu option, or a public parking option. But it's achievable, utilizing those options. So those would probably, those would trigger a special permit if those did have to be used, and I'm guessing that they would. But those are achievable. And you do have your, the letter from Attorney Small.
Could you just summarize that as far as, if you would please?
Yeah. So she says, I'll read the last paragraph because I think that's the relevant part. "When a variance is granted, it is based upon the facts and plans presented to and relied upon the Zoning Board of Appeals. This application seeks to change the uses on the property, and compliance with the current regulations is appropriate. It appears that the Commission has provided a means to obtain the proposed changes by way of special permit if the plan is satisfactory. The Commission, through the new regulation, appears to have clearly intended projects in the new zones that comply with the new parking requirements, while recognizing that in those cases where it is not possible, they will consider modifications in accordance with the regulations. In this case, I believe the Commission may utilize this regulation to either require full compliance or consider a modification in accordance with its regulations."
Thank you. I guess with that, I think you've heard what our Town Planner has indicated, as well as I assume. I know you've received the communications from our Corporate Counsel. So with that, I guess I'd give you an opportunity to, you know, to address those issues.
We all have a few comments that, but first, you know, I want to thank Casey because we spent several meetings and a lot of time on a very complex site, and we were able to put the history of this entire parcel together, and look at the new regulations and how to best apply it. And I think her analysis is correct, and I think the complete analysis. And we obviously disagree, or I should say not disagree, but there's a few points that need further consideration with the Commission, specifically the variances. So to summarize, I think what Casey was saying, we have the variance that there's three units that exist in this condominium association. One of the units is the Jay Christian Building, which has the variance that she talked about. And the second unit is the subject of this application with the other variances. I think we can agree that, like in the building that we're talking about, 353 Center Street, perhaps going forward for planning and using the regulations, those variances probably aren't compatible in our vision and how to best accomplish our vision, which we think is consistent with the plan development. But I think that the point that we want to discuss is probably is a recognition of the variance for Number Nine, North Main Street, which was granted in 2008. Would you like to add a few comments?
If I may. So we actually believed initially that this was a straightforward application. It fell within 4.26F2. It was a change of use within existing footprint. And when Casey raises the point of the next paragraph, that next paragraph, in all of the two and a half years that we worked on the workshops, and I, if I saw that as part of this process, I think I would have raised my hand, because it really would appear to negate the paragraph above it, which in fact allows for change of use. By going and saying if you add residential or gross square footage, you have to go look at the parking, half the billings and, half the billings on, and then TC would not comply. And yet, our whole point through those regulations was to make it so that there could be a change of use within the existing footprint. But that being said, I went through the calculations, and interesting enough, if you look at just 350 Center Street and Fishbine to the front on 21 Main, North Main, the project is in compliance. What really tips the scale is the size of the restaurant at Jay Christians. And with all due respects to Casey, I went through the numbers... Yeah. If you could please just refer to Mrs. Hand as Mrs. Hand instead of Casey, I'd appreciate that, please. I'm sorry, surely. Mrs. Hand had suggested that it would be accomplishable to have the new regulations with shared parking conform with those calculations. That is not correct. The reason is, is that there is, there's no way with shared parking to get that space to come down to six spaces. You cannot possibly, matter of fact, I think the lowest it drops is to like 22 and a half spaces during the evening is the highest peak. So basically, it takes all the parking from 350 in order to make that space compliant. However, if you were to calculate the variance based on the new regulations, and therefore, which they have, they go from 75 square foot to 150 square foot, and then the project is compliant. But it can't be compliant under the new regulations with shared parking. It actually can't get low enough. It's 6% off when you, when you run the numbers doing shared parking with the new regulation. But if you, if you just didn't use shared parking and used the half the variance to meet the new regulation, it is in compliance by four or five spaces. So the Commission has to decide, in my eyes, how much of the variance really is applicable. Half the variance, the entire variance, but without the variance, this project, there's not much of anything that can be done in this project without a large acquisition of, you know, spaces that are allowed through the permitting process. But I wanted to go through and give you some comfort in that this applicant will be before you in the next several weeks. And so if I could go to the board for a second, with that being made.
Could I address some of the representations that were made before we...
Would please, Mrs. Hand.
Thank you. So first off, I, like I said, I think most of us were there when we, when these regulations were approved. And I remember pretty clearly the conversations about whether or not, or how to address, because I wrote the regulation, how to address the increase in numbers of residential units. And the conversation was that increases in residential units, and this was raised in part by the applicant, that increases in residential units present their own particular parking demand. So that it's not like with office uses or other types of commercial uses where there is public park, you know, where you can kind of depend on public parking in the same way. So the conversation was, it was because we took it out at one point and then decided to put that requirement back in, that the residential increase would apply. So that was a very specific decision that, at least the way I recall, unless other people recall it differently, but that I recall that conversation being very specific and very intentional, that the increase in residential units was added in, that at that point, you did have to reach full compliance with the parking requirements. And then the second point that I disagree with is the representation that, I guess Mr. Walworth was referring only to the shared parking option, but there are other options that are written into your regulations that would allow the applicant to accomplish compliance. Specifically, the fees in lieu of parking, that option.
Bicycle and a whole bunch of other...
Yep. And so the fees in lieu of parking, I can give you the exact calculation. You're allowed to include, to have fees in lieu of parking for up to 65% of your parking requirement. So that alone would easily allow accomplishment of that without use of any of the other options. So the parking requirement with the inclusion of the restaurant would have been, as represented at the time of the variance, it would go to 72 spaces. I think the restaurant is actually a little bit bigger than was represented at the time of the variance application, which is a separate issue. But at a max, it brings you up to 81 spaces. There are 56 on the site, but it would go up to 62 if you include the six that are part of that condo. So you're at 81 requirements, 62 provided. So that would easily, pretty easily be accomplished using some of the options on the reg. So I just want to clarify my perspective.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, I probably missed the last meeting when it was put back in. But Casey's correct. I have the exact same numbers. We'll try Mrs. Hand again. Mrs. Hand. Probably have known Mrs. Hand too long. Excuse me.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, we agree, you know, John and I, with the numbers, we, our numbers are consistent with those of Mrs. Hand, and her and I have met personally and come up with the same numbers. It's our opinion that the intent of these regulations was to bring, to get closer to the plan of, what was visioned by the plan of development. And I think what John is saying is that there's ways to be creative with the bike rack, the shared parking, the public parking, and so forth, in this scenario. Moving on to the next scenario, there's not, there's just not, it'd be very difficult. It'd be a tremendous challenge to go any further. We have a vision for this area, and actually, if you, if we could...
Well, I really don't want to talk about a future plan. We have an application just before us right now. So that's what we have. As far as, you know, a future plan, a future application, that's something in the future. So I just don't think it would be wise for the Commission to make a decision on an application that we have before us today, based upon perhaps another future application. That just doesn't seem to make sense to me, because as you know, a future plan can change in the future.
Yes. No, and I think probably the most important point we have in this conversation is, it's a complex property. There is a variance that exists with the Jay Christian Building that we would hope that the Commission would recognize. We understand there's two other variances in the 350 Center Street Building, which Janice pointed out, that perhaps would be revisited because they're not necessarily compatible with what would be being done in that building. So those would be taken off the table. It wouldn't make, it's not logical, it wouldn't make sense. However, the Jay Christian one, we believe nothing's changed there. We believe that should be recognized, and that's simply... We believe that should be recognized and that's simply our position.
Okay, thank you. At this point in time, I'd ask for comments from commission members.
Could I just add one more thing?
Oh, absolutely.
I just wanted to say that I do want to also thank Mr. Dean Natale because he has been very cooperative in working through this application process and in trying to figure out some of this. And this is a difference of position and ultimately, it is up to the commission. So it's, they're your regs, it's your interpretation to make. And I just, you know, I just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Mrs. Hand. Again, commission members, Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Mr. Chairman, I was listening intently and read the materials, but I think I want to make sure I understand the issue. And I'll put it into my language if that's okay. The issue is the variance that was granted for J. Christians is the issue.
Yes.
And the applicant would like to us to recognize the variance and this application only works with that variance basis?
The, I, the project does not require the variance to work, but it would require them, right, the application as a site plan, yeah, only works, yes.
And again, I think, you know, the three gentlemen at the table are very familiar. They sat through us with hours of downtown regs. So, you know, the, the application is for a change of use, but if I read the comments from the town attorney and from the town planner and the applicant, the question before the commission right now is, is it a change of use without a special permit or a special permit? Because a special permit would have more requirements. And there'd be more, potentially more issues for the applicant.
I think that's, that's what it boils down to at the end.
I'm trying to boil it down, yeah. I mean, and again, I think, you know, I've been on record and as much as I agree with the chairman, you know, 99% of the time, I'm of the opinion downtown parking is a nice problem to have. But residential units, I fully agree, need dedicated parking. And I think if I read your memo correctly, that's where you're, that's the point that you're making is interpretation of the new regulation in no way waived the requirement that any new created residential units would have dedicated parking. Is that a true statement?
Well, it's, it's not dedicated per se, but it's, it's this way. The idea was if you have any residential units, it all gets rolled into compliance because otherwise you might only have two parking spaces and 10 residential units. And whether you dedicate them or not, in practice, they need to be there.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think, I like the plan. I like the idea that something's going to happen there. I understand the question before us is whether or not it can be done as a site plan or a special permit. And I think nobody in this room who doesn't know me knows my position on variances. I mean, I just, because it does cause a conflict and I think that's where, this is an example where it's a conflict because of the issue.
Is it, may I make a comment at this point? I, I'm sorry to disagree with you, Mr. Chairman, but the future is important as a part of this discussion. And we got to this, one of the very first projects under the new zoning regulations because we're looking forward to what will become of the downtown. So there are a couple of things I'd like to talk about. The first is the condominium association that was formed to include Christians in this property. It appears, and please disagree with me if I get this wrong, but it appears as though it might be one of the few selfless things that took place in the uptown. There were fences from the former, from the police station and all sorts of subdivisions of the parking behind the buildings that we're talking about. And in an effort to clean that up, not related to any development of any property, the condominium association was formed. And after the condominium association was formed and the parking was kind of combined and cleaned up, Christians became a restaurant. And the condominium association got, I think the expression is left holding the bag. And so that's, so Christians, in an effort to save, to improve the parking behind these buildings, the condominium association now bears a tremendous burden if those variances go away. Now, I agree with you, I want the variance, I'm not a fan of variances, but it is a little piece of philosophy that we need to discuss as a part of this. The other piece of philosophy that I think we need to discuss is that you made the mistake of saying that you're excited about something happening there. We are only this excited about this project. We're this excited about the next project, which is everything that happens at the corner behind the liquor store. And so, yes, we can do this project, we can figure it out, we can put in a couple of bike racks, we can do the minimum stuff and we can put some apartments on the second floor of the old town hall and we're kind of done. And so if there is a way of looking at this so that the variances that went with Christians stayed with Christians and we did everything that we all think should happen on the rest of the property, if there was a path to that, it would make the downtown a their place. And so, you know, forgive me for ranting and rambling, but I just wanted to get that in there.
Sure, bring it back to the commission. Mr. Fitzsimmons, are you, have additional comments or?
Not yet, still digesting.
Other commission members with questions or comments? Mr. Maratso.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I guess the question would be towards to Casey, Mrs. Hand. Would our temporary parking in the back come into play with this at all?
The justification behind how we reduced the parking, why we reduced the parking requirements. So the parking requirements are substantially lower now and in this area than they are in the rest of town with the idea that there is public parking, there is on-street parking. I think there was some maybe difference of opinions about how low that parking should go or not go. But yeah, I mean, that's where the reduction and the other options kind of came into play is because there is, there is public parking available, but they can't claim, nobody can claim the public parking towards meeting their requirement.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I just had some extra correspondence that I don't believe was read into the record because we didn't hear this last month. And I don't think this was included in this month's packet, but I had it left over.
Yeah, I have that here too. Mr. Maratso, did you read in all of that?
Did you read over from last month?
Yeah, we didn't, that was given to us last month.
And I don't believe I read.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, if you would.
That was our fault.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. If you'd please note all that.
Sure. We have an interdepartmental referral, reference the application 304-19 dated February 8th, 2019, signed by the fire marshal. We have an interdepartmental referral dated February 8th, 2019, signed by the director of health. Correspondence dated March 28th, 2019. Signed by Casey Hand, town planner. We have correspondence referencing a variance number 08-005 dated January 22nd, 2008. Signed by Mark DeVoe, assistant town planner. We have an inter-office memorandum to Casey Hand, town planner, from Eric Kruger, senior engineer, dated March 29th, 2019. Some correspondence dated April 3rd, 2019. Basically referencing the history and overview of the property and association.
Thank you, Mr. Maratso. And thank you, Mr. Cohen, for recognizing that. Would you like to make some further comments?
No, no other comments, thank you.
Mr. Hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Hand, I do have a question for you. You know, I was wondering, this can't be the first time where this has come up, where we have a pre-existing variance and then a change of use being sought. And the question then arises, what happens to the pre-existing variance under those circumstances? I got to believe that that has come up before.
Since I've been here, we've never changed our parking requirements before. So it's never come up where there was a change, where there was a new set of parking requirements where that would matter. So typically, a variance is for a particular use. If parking variances are pretty rare, except for in the town center, that's where we've mostly seen parking variances. So it's a good, it's a good question, but I don't know if I have an answer for you.
Yeah, because I'm trying to go through this in my head and it seems to me that the question is, do the variance, the pre-existing variances continue on in effect despite the change of use?
Right, and I think that's what we, I was, I mean, that's where I would direct you to Attorney Small's letter or her position on it.
Yeah, and, and and this is not a criticism of Attorney Small at all. But a lot of this, what she says in here seems to be, makes sense, but there's no like citation or legal authority. She kind of, she just says it. And although, you know, I have no doubt that she's right, that's the only thing that concerns me about the letter, which is why I'm asking, you know, how we have, there must be precedent because the change, the change in the parking requirements, it seems to me is sort of a red herring because either the, I, it doesn't seem to me that there's any question that the, the new parking requirements would apply. The question is whether the pre-existing variances continue in effect. Do I understand that correctly?
I, no, I would, I would say that's a big, yeah, I would say that's a fair. I think part of the question that was raised is whether the new parking requirements apply. And I think part of the question that is raised is whether the variance basically supersedes those. We, the way the regulation was written is, as it, which we don't have anywhere else and we didn't have before, is that the parking has to be brought entirely into compliance when there's, and we also have never had a reg before where you could interchange uses within the existing footprint regardless of the parking requirement. So that's why I just, I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult or not think of, I'm just not sure that there is an example of something that's comparable. Now, variances do, and I think this is why Attorney Small, and I don't want to speak for her, but we did talk about it a bit at the end of her letter. You know, I think ultimately, it's up to the commission to decide what the intent of that regulation was, whether the intent of the regulation was, again, to sort of accomplish full compliance. And then there is also the question to your point of how does the variance apply? And I think there are probably different arguments that could be made about that. So I think that variances run with the land, but they are also based on the exact set of circumstances under which they're approved. So what I use as an example, and it's a completely different example, but there is, there are examples of where someone gets a variance to do an addition off the back of their house. Say you only have to, you're allowed to build five feet, within five feet where the setback's 15 feet or something. And then they build much further than what was previously, than what was actually approved under the variance. It's been decided, determined that you don't get, you don't get like a free five-yard setback all the way down. You can't just make it as big as you want. You're basically, it's exactly what was approved at the time. So I think that's kind of the crux of the question. But again, I think it's really, it's, it's, they're your regulations and so to some degree, I think there is some, some room for interpretation by the commission.
Thank you, and I guess then I would turn my question to the applicant. If the commission were to decide that the prior variances are invalid because of the change of use or do not continue in effect, do you agree that the new parking regulations would then apply?
Oh, we have every intention to comply with the parking requirements of this zone. And even Mrs. Hand and I had looked at the analysis and we are able to comply 100%. We agree there's a parking regulation and we all sat in the meetings together. We didn't expect, we expected that the town recognized the J. Christian property independently. And when Mrs. Hand and I sat down together, we said we were well aware there was a variance, we couldn't find it, went over to the land records and sure enough, we found it. Interestingly enough, it's, the variance was granted to the individual, not the association. It was granted to Mr. Richard Termini with his home address and with the named applicant, mentioning nine North Main Street. No, and it also recognizes a parking area for six cars. Nowhere was the association mentioned in this whatsoever. So this was, now, we saw this as an independent property. And in fact, Mrs. Hand and I developed a spreadsheet with two units, the Fishbend building and 350, and looked at the analysis and said, you know, J. Fishbend's building never had a variance, let's just look at the parking requirements, we'll develop this analysis, we comply. And in that analysis, with the new regulations, we have 56 spaces available and we require 55.2. We're complete compliance in this. It should also be noted that when you go from residential, from office to residential, our parking requirements actually decreased. The second floor, which is around 9,400 square feet, the parking requirements dropped by six or seven spaces. So that was also added, that we're actually reducing the use. But the most important was is we never expected this to be included because we always thought this was independent. Association was not named on the variance. And so when we looked at, when we sat through all these meetings, we did the analysis, because we also, we have a vision, we're looking ahead. We're looking at an adjacent property, we want to merge and we want to do something better that's consistent. We didn't want to leave it as is. We always envisioned this as an independent property. 350 Center Street has two variances, as Janice Small had pointed out, one for Cafe Rot and a second that was never used. And even Janice Small recognized, you know, there just doesn't seem like compatibility. And we would agree that that should be, that shouldn't be recognized because that's within the building and there's a lot of moving parts. And we, we don't even believe there's a, we just, we're okay to dismiss that. We intend to be, actually, the compatibility doesn't include his variance for Cafe Rot. So for Cafe Rot that's in 350 Center Street, we took no consideration of any variance whatsoever. We took that property standalone with the parking rights it had and we are full compliant. Moving ahead, when we look to merge properties and work with our neighbors as the regulations promote, we would then take a different analysis. We would utilize the bike path, we would utilize the shared, other public parking. And we would also designate a border which could be merged with adjacent property. And then we.
Can I ask your question, Mr. Hand?
Well, I think somewhat. What I'm getting from you is you do not want the J. Christians property included in this calculation, is that, do I understand that correctly?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Might I just add one item too? When, when the applicant went before the ZBA with, for the variance that is some hundred spaces, which he's formally dropping to. which he is formally dropping tonight, that request for that variance or the strength of that variance, the Tremini J. Christians' property was not part of that calculation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other commission members? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
I just... We have a straggler correspondence. Want to read it to the record?
Read the straggler.
Late breaking news.
Late breaking news. There you go.
This is correspondent's April 5, 2019, to the Planning and zoning Commission, Town of Wallingford, submitted by Jay Fishbine.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Fishbine. Mr. Fishbine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There we go. I appreciate the dialogue we're having. In an effort to move this along, I would certainly like to thank the applicant for clarifying some point. And I looked at Mr. Cohen and said, that's it. The variance was granted in name to J. Christians and not to the condo association. That, to me, is part of the rub slash problem. I am of the opinion that I'd like to be able to move forward as a change of use as a site plan to allow the applicant to proceed, has submitted with the understanding that further development in that site has to conform. Whether there was a misunderstanding of our regulation or the intent. I'm saying this as just one member of the commission. I think you all know, I was in favor of zero parking in downtown, because you'll have to figure it out. The owners of the property, the people who want to use the property will figure it out. I think it makes sense to move forward for this particular proposal, based upon the comments of Mr. Dina Tally. Residential use is less parking than office space. It's just the numbers don't lie, you know? And I think it'd be great and ideal to say... That's why I was asking initially, dedicate spots. So my question through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mrs. Hand would be, do we have enough information to move forward in that direction? Because... Or you need that determination, because I noticed this application is dated several months ago. So they've been on the queue for a while. So I wasn't sure if there's support for that direction, if we have enough to proceed, or do we need to take consensus?
If it's just going to be a change of use, then yeah. I mean, I think there's no reason you couldn't proceed.
Mr. Chairman, through you. I would propose, as far as rendering the decision directed at us by Corporation Council and the town planner and the applicant, that I would suggest and recommend or request that we move forward as a straight change of use, and that any condition, if it moves forward, would include the caveat that all future development would have to... At the site, you know, owned by the condo would have to conform. If that makes...
Oh, thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. I guess I would just like to comment. I know you and I agree on many issues. I think this is one that I think that we perhaps do not agree on. I'm looking at the comments that were made by our town planner as well as the comments that were made by our corporate council. And, you know, I'm looking, and I think our town planner, and I think perhaps our corporate council is looking at this as, not the J. Christians' site is an independent site, but looking at this as, you know, it's... The property is, you know, the condominium association. It's the three, you know, the three units that make up the... Or the three properties that make up the condominium association. And given that, I understand the variance. But I agree with our town planner. I think if you're going to use the variance or looking, I guess backing up, that with the application, for looking what you're looking to do, I think the appropriate thing is for the approval or looking to put this under our current regulations that's available. And I think as our town planner indicated, you know, there is options or there are options that are available to you in order to make the parking compliant. So, you know, with that, again, I disagree with Mr. Fitzsimmons on that. But that's only my opinion. At this point in time, we have five members on the commission. I'd simply ask the other commission members to chime in as far as what their feelings may be, so we can move this forward one way or the other. And with that, I guess I'll start with Mr. Madarazzo. I don't see any hands being raised.
Mr. Chairman, I would support Mr. Fitzsimmons' recommendations in getting this to move forward.
Thank you.
I would agree with Mr. Fitzsimmons on this one.
Mr. Cohen?
Likewise, I think Mr. Fitzsimmons made a very good argument on, you know, the separation of these properties, and I would agree with that.
All right. With that, you guys are up.
So I just want to clarify one thing before we move forward. And I don't think we can make it a condition that they comply in the future. So if we're deciding, which is fine, that the variance stands as is, then I think that has to be a permanent... I think either it does or it doesn't. So I just want to... I will double-check that with the town attorney. But I think, and that's fine. We can just say it applies moving forward. But I just want to make sure we're clear about that.
Mr. Chairman, through you, Mrs. Hand. I guess I'm thinking forward, because obviously, you know, we know we keep records of everything. So we've had a very healthy discussion regarding this site, the parking requirements. So I'm thinking any condition of approval would include some wording that you'd be able to point to in the future. Period.
Are we good with that?
She doesn't like it.
I don't think so.
I mean, I already... I think that if the decision is made that variances stand, that these types of variances stand, even when a change of use is involved to residential, then that's the decision. But again, I will check with the town attorney. Maybe she'll disagree with me, and we can do it. But it doesn't hurt to have it on the record, and then it can be decided moving forward.
All right. Can I ask for clarification? There's two variances. One, again, for Cafe Ro, which was made part of the association. And there's one for J. Christians. So, Mrs. Hand, when you make that inquiry, there's maybe two separate parts of the question?
Well, I think the representation was already made that you were agreeing to void the other two variances. Okay.
We're all squared away now? All right. With that, please begin your presentation.
Good evening. My name's Stephen Lazarus. I'm an architect in town. This is pretty much what it's all about. We're trying to put some apartments on the second floor in the Old Town Hall. And the part of this that I find most exciting is actually the kind of secondary gain that we got, because it was once the Town Hall. Elevators are very expensive. People don't typically put elevators in small buildings unless it's a public building. And so when the Dina Tallys got this building, they got an elevator. And for years, it was used as what I consider the second-best use is office space. But as a residence, we don't have... I don't think we have any suitable for elderly apartments in the downtown itself. Now, the new construction that we've got out by the train station, yes. Those are elevator buildings. They work. They're elderly-friendly. But I don't know that we have any of those downtown. The closest is probably Silver Pond. And so this is obviously different than Silver Pond. But what we get here, because of the elevator, changes the way the building code affects the building. So all of a sudden, we have 10 new apartments. And because they're accessible by elevator, it's as if they're on the ground floor. And so every one of the 10 apartments is in compliance with minimum accessibility requirements. They're called Type B units. There's more clearance in the bathrooms. There's more clearance in the kitchen. Everything, the washers and dryers are accessible in all the units. The apartment that we get is a result of having the elevator that we inherited. They're much better. They're much friendlier. And I think that this will be a very significant improvement in the apartment mix that we have for people downtown. There are a total of 10 apartments. One is fully handicapped accessible. Six of the 10 are two-bedroom. Four of them, including the accessible apartment, are one-bedroom apartments. They average in the neighborhood of 800 or 900 square feet apiece. They're nice apartments. It's a great location for them, and we are pleased to be bringing them to you. Any questions for me about the apartments?
Questions for the applicant on the apartments?
Thank you.
Just to add to what Stephen presented, we intend to do this in phases. The second floor is currently occupied by different small businesses. And so we intend to move slowly through, so we just don't disrupt any of the current businesses that are occupying those spaces.
Is that the extent of your presentation? I just certainly don't have to give anymore.
Thank you.
If that's it. Any questions for the applicant on the application? I guess my question would be, you know, now you're changing this to residential. As far as the parking lot, you know, that's, I think you'd agree, it's in somewhat disrepair. You've got the ratty fence on the back of the property and all of that. Again, it's going to be apartments, part of your plan. Is that going to have the parking lot improved, the fence improved? Because right now, at least in my mind, for, you know, residential, forgive me for saying, but I don't think it would be very attractive, especially the rear of the property.
And thank you for your comments, Mr. Seiter. And it's a unique building. The building wasn't designed by Stephen. It was pre-existing. And certainly, you know, it's aging. We've already taken the first step. You know, we think there's definitely improvements to be made. We've already connected with an adjacent property unofficially. We have a vision for this, so that there's better traffic flow. Our goal is to reduce curb cuts and do some improvements besides the basic asphalt. So there's remnants of old foundations that exist in that parking lot. They work because they sort of organize the parking layout the way it exists now. We envision a different parking layout, because the cars will be exiting off onto Wallace. So there will be improvements. We are interested in doing improvements ourselves, and we believe, you know... And I think as we move forward, you're going to see some major... In our plans, you'll see some proposals for improvements as well.
Good. Thank you. Any other commission members? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think downtown parking is a nice problem to have. However, this site abuts the town-owned Wooding Kaplan piece, which is not in great shape to begin with. So this is like a neighborhood. You know, when someone starts to improve their property, the neighbor starts to do things at their property. So hopefully, this could be the, you know, the beginning of the improvements up in the upper area of downtown. I agree with you in the, you know, any improvements you can do to the parking configuration, usage, layout, I think would go a long way. Hopefully, the town, you know, if they do something at Wooding Kaplan, you know, we've only had that for, you know, 30 years. But if they could fix that, that would help certainly.
Could I have 30 seconds of your time on the clock? We're eating up to 10 seconds. Burning daylight. Microphone.
If you'd use the microphone, please.
Phase one we discussed tonight. Phase two will be a retail infill proposed to you for approval in a couple months. And with that, there will be a combined joining of the adjacent 382 with 350 and a circulation plan that we just discussed. Additional parking where these aged residences barely stand. Then phase three will be the addition of a four-story building, residential over retail on the corner, offering a very nice view as you enter from the east into Wallingford. Thank you. Does anyone from the public would like to make any comments on the application? Yes, gentleman in the back. Name an address, please.
My name is Jack McGuire, 373 Center Street. I'm Vincenzo's next-door neighbor. I'm very excited about this project. I think this is long overdue. I'm glad that it appears that the council is behind this. And I'm looking forward to what is going to happen in the downtown area in the future. When you were talking about parking lots, I got a call from my partner of my building, Mr. Farrell, saying he thinks we should be doing our parking over. Personally, I think they will just genite it or something like that and line it. But that is the next thing. When you're talking about that, that is exactly what happens. If Jerry hears about this, he'll be on my butt in a second to make sure we get a new parking lot. Again, I want to thank you very much. I think this is a great project, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? At this point in time, I'd bring you back to the commission for a motion on the application.
Two questions, Mr. Chairman, through you to the town planner, Mrs. Hand. Is there a bond amount?
No. The no-site improvement.
And we have no engineering comments?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to approve a change of use for Dina Tally to convert use of the entire second story of the building from office to 10 residential units without any site changes, improvements, as shown in plans entitled Property Survey, Land of Town Center Condominium, 350 Center Street, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated November 19, 2005, revised to November 28, 2018, and further revised by the applicant, subject to the following conditions. Number one, comments of the Town of Wallingford Town Planner dated March 28, 2019. Number two, comments of the Town of Wallingford Fire Marshal's Office dated 312, 2019. And finally, number three, comments from the Town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Senior Engineer dated 329, 19. That's all.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And no. Application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Brings us to our next application, which is a site plan. 65,424 square-foot hotel, Shields Hotel, 1175 Barnes Road. And again, Mr. Madarazzo, if you'd noted any additional correspondence for the record, the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for his presentation.
Mr. Chairman, just to confirm, this was carried over from last month?
Yes, it was.
I don't believe I read any of this, and so we'll start from the beginning.
It was opened already, so you only need to read the new stuff for this one?
I think we just have A and B.
Perfect. Thank you. We have correspondence from Schmitz, John Schmitz, to Casey Hand, dated 4/19/19. And... A landscape plan sketch dated 5/10/19. And some correspondence, declaration of future roadway dedication dated just May 2019. And that would be it.
Yeah.
And some additional correspondence. Arctic Fire Red twig door... Oh, this is landscaping references.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. Just as I mentioned earlier when we began, Mr. Allison, because he was here last month and sat on the application, and Mr. Vanoyt was not, so... and sat on the application, and Mr. Vanoyt was not, so, you know, Mr. Allison will replace Mr. Vanoyt just on this application. With that, if the applicant, we again introduce himself and begin his presentation, please.
Sir, good evening. My name's John Schmitz. I'm a civil engineer, project manager with BL Companies, 355 Research Parkway in Meriden. Since we were last here, there were a couple of items that were outstanding. I think one of them was read into the record. The applicant, Shields Hotels retained Attorney Dennis Sennaviva, who worked with Town Attorney Small, to draft a declaration, which basically explains the applicant's position regarding a future access road to the rear parcel. The applicant is, you know, understands that the future development in the rear would require an access road, and looks forward to that development someday, and conveying that property to the rear, so that a town road may exist in the future. In addition, we work with staff to develop some additional landscaping along the front of the site. As you may recall, from the existing driveway to the west toward 91, there's an existing sightline easement. That restricts the amount of landscaping we could put in there without blocking the sightline, so there's no trees directly right up against the road. There's also some utilities in that area. What we did was come up with an exhibit, a plan to provide some low-growing shrubs and plantings to better hide and screen the sand filter that's located along the front of the property. What I just handed out was an exhibit just showing some colored exhibit, rather, of what some of those plantings look like. Some dogwood plantings, shamrock inkberries, some low-growing junipers, and some switchgrass. These would be interspersed between the right-of-way and the sand filter, provides some additional screening. However, they're shorter shrubs, they're not going to grow more than four or five feet, so they'll be underneath the sightline, so we don't have any issues in that regard. I'd be happy to address any questions. I did bring an exhibit, a colored rendering, I think that was part of the packet previously, just showing the architecture. The hotel would be a Towne Place Suites by Marriott.
Good. Thank you. Mrs. Hand, do you have any comments on the application before I go to commission members?
So besides the landscaping, which I think is a good suggestion, I think that's a good way of kind of working with the challenges there, the other issue that was outstanding was the issue of the easement. There is an easement, well, there are lots of easements, but there is an easement, an access easement from the subject property to the property to the rear, and what we had talked about with Mr. Schmitz, and with most recently Attorney Sennaviva, was at our last meeting in the office, was the need to clarify exactly what that easement says can and can't happen, or exactly what the rights, the question is, particularly because we have a regulation that says no more than two properties can access off of a driveway, then, which would translate into if this rear property were to get developed and use that access, it would probably necessitate construction of a town standard road to be deeded to the town. So that easement was an easement that was reached privately, the town, it had nothing to do with the town, but what we wanted to make sure was that it was clear to us and to everybody involved, kind of what may or may not happen there, what could or couldn't happen there, because that is really the only access to this piece directly. There's another piece that accesses off of a residential street. Most likely, all of those pieces, if they were to be developed with, and then there's another one further back, owned by the same family. I sort of anticipate that if those pieces were to be developed, it's likely they'd be developed together. We would much rather have them access from Route 68 than from the residential street that's over to the east. So the applicant has agreed that they will, that essentially that the easement allows construction of a town standard road that could potentially be deeded to the town. So if it were constructed as a town road, not that the town would necessarily construct it, but if the developer of the property to the rear were, they would have the right to construct it as a road, and that that could be deeded to the town. So now we're trying to figure out how to make, is that a fair characterization, Mr. Schmitz?
Yes, and my recollection is that Attorney Sennaviva mentioned that the easement document itself would need to be updated and recorded.
Yeah, so what you have in your packets is he sent, he sent me like a draft declaration, that's not the official language, it has to obviously be vetted through his clients, through the town attorney, and then I wanted a chance to review it too. But, so that's why I've suggested a condition of approval for you, that the status of that easement to be clarified in language, and right, as Attorney Sennaviva explained, it would be a declaration on the land records, basically per the current owners modifying or clarifying the status of that road. So we have to get the lawyers to iron out the language details, but I think that we're all on the same page about what can happen and kind of how it will happen, and I think there is also going to be a note put on the final maps, right? And so that should address that, and that was the only other outstanding issue.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hand. Any commission members, any questions for the applicant? Mr. Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had one question. It was brought up at last meeting's presentation. There was a discussion about whether the hotel would have a restaurant or bar establishment in it, and I believe the representation last time was no, I just want to make sure that that's still correct.
That's correct.
No other questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I just have one question on the landscape plan that you gave us. In the sand filter, it, there's one, two, three, it's almost like there's four boxes in there, although they're not completely closed here.
May I approach just?
Oh, absolutely. Just right here, those, what is that?
There's a dashed line showing on the plan. Those are the under drains, so as the stormwater percolates through.
Goes down in there. Okay. Good. Thank you very much. Any members from the public would like to make a comment on the application? Seeing none, I bring it back to the commission if there's any comments, final comments from the commission members. If not, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to approve a site plan for Shield Hotels to construct a one-hundred-and-twenty-room hotel at 1175 Barnes Road, as shown on plans entitled Land Development Plans for Planning and Zoning Commission Application for Proposed Hotel Development, 1175 Barnes Road, Connecticut, Route 68, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated March 8th, 2019, revised to April 3rd, 2019, subject to the following conditions. Number one, language declaration acceptable to the town of, to the town of Wallingford Law Department and the town of Wallingford Town Planner, to be filed on the town land records, clarifying the status of the access easement over the property as it pertains to the possibility of connection of a town standard road and conveyance of said road to the town of Wallingford in accordance with the town's requirements for road acceptance. Number two, landscaping additions to be implemented and shown on plans as discussed on tonight's record. Number three, applicant to, excuse me, number three, comments of the town of Wallingford Town Planner, dated March 27th, 2019, and applicant's response dated April 3rd, 2019. Number four, comments of the town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Senior Engineer, dated April 5th, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on, our next item is a new business. It's a site plan, soccer field reconstruction, Cho Rosemary Hall, 55 and North Elm Street. Again, if the applicant and/or his representative, please come forward to begin their presentation. And Mr. Madarazzo, please read all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have correspondence dated April 18th, 2019, referencing site plan Correspondence from Rob Chaplin to Casey Hand, Town Planner, dated 4/15, 2019. Interdepartmental referral, referencing application 212-19, dated April 4th, 2019, signed by the fire marshal. Correspondence dated April 30th, 2019.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
And that would be it. Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo.
An additional set of plans dated 3/5, 19.
Thank you. If the applicant would please introduce themselves and begin the application.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Walter Scheffler. I am the chief financial officer at Cho Rosemary Hall. I am joined here this evening by Mr. Rob Chaplin, our project manager at Clark Companies. Clark Companies is our design and build partner for the site plan that we've submitted. It's a soccer field reconstruction on the North McGuire Field at Cho Rosemary Hall, 333 Christian Street in Wallingford. Good evening. As, is this working?
Speak one more time and we'll see.
Is this on?
Oh, yes, I just, if you would, please just pull a little closer, that would probably be a little better.
My bad. Thanks, Walt. A little bit about Clark Companies and myself. My name is Rob Chaplin, project manager with Clark Companies for nineteen years. Clark Companies has been in business for seventy years, and thirty-five of which dedicated to outdoor athletic field construction. We were contracted by Cho Rosemary. We work in the northeast United States as designers and builders of outdoor athletic surfaces. Can I just walk you through the plans quickly? As Walt said, we have an existing soccer field.
Sir, if you could stand to the right, so the cameras were, we could pick that up, to the right of the plans, that would be great. Thank you.
No problem. So we have an existing soccer field, accessed, you know, just, I think it's North McGuire Field, near the running track at Cho Rosemary Hall, natural grass surface, heavy clay. We did some soil testing, and with the recent rains, you know, pretty much unusable, unplayable. So we were contracted to put in a synthetic turf surface, which is laid over a stone base, a porous stone base, which is eight inches thick. What that does is allow, instead of the stormwater to flow across the field, it allows it to go right down through it, be retained within the stone base in a perimeter loop of, in this case, it's a twenty-four-inch collector pipe, HDPE, in a stone trench. What that allows us to do is retain all this stormwater and control the outflow. So we have a outlet control device located outside the field, and it is outletted very slowly down into the wetlands. Another feature, this field has a couple of drains already. I think it was built in the eighties originally, has a couple of drains that currently are outletted into the wetland. The pipe kind of sticks out, and it's created some wash and channelized flow. With this, what we propose to do with this application is intercept that back where the grades allow us to do so, and then redirect the stormwater in a flat pipe with riprap controlled, and that'll, you know, fix some of the erosion issues that the site currently exists. So with this, we plan on accessing the site on an existing, well, I say it's existing, it was a, it was the construction access, I think initially, when. That's right. When the field was built. It was overgrown, so we have some shrubs to put in, or to take out, rather, and install a gravel road all the way down to a future building pad. That gravel road will have its own, I say drainage system, it's its own drainage area with a small stormwater attenuation pond located next to the building structure. And that's really the overview of what we've been hired to provide, with the exception of sports lighting. We do plan on installing sports lights with Musco Lighting, who by far has the best technology out here with regard to spill and glare control. And we have brought in a representative from Musco to do a quick presentation on the light system. Sure. Thanks.
Good evening. For the record, Michael Mahoney with Musco Lighting. What we're depicting here are four seventy-foot poles just off the top of the penalty box area. Each of those poles would have eight fifteen-hundred-watt LED fixtures, and those fixtures are full cutoff, zero uplight, very dark sky friendly. The resulting control of the light is depicted here. This is a line one-hundred-and-fifty feet from the edge of the field, and the average of those seventy target points is point zero four foot candles, so four hundredths of one foot candle at one-hundred-and-fifty feet from the edge of the field. The performance level on the field's fifty-foot candles, which is pretty standard for this level of play. And that's the sports lighting in a nutshell.
Thank you. Any questions on the sports lighting? Thank you.
Sure. So the genesis of the project is really the weather that we've been having. There's not a change in scope of our anticipated athletic play. The lighting itself, so that the field is really intended to create sort of a safer, more playable, not even extended season. We had a lot of difficulty in the last fall season with just having playable surfaces on Saturdays, weekday afternoon practices, given environmental conditions on the fields. We've thought about this for some time. We had thought about the sort of prospect of having another marquee surface, this time dedicated more towards soccer than some of the other earlier uses for existing Class of Seventy-Six field, which we put in some ten years ago. Do not see this driving extra traffic to campus, really just an existing use of capability for the current student body, and limited use with what we think will be really tremendous cutoff for the lighting inside of the neighborhood for any of Butters. You know, really thinking of the lighting to provide some extended practice time in the late fall as we get into tournament season.
Thank you. Is that the extent of your presentation? Is that correct?
Correct.
Good. Thank you. Mrs. Hand, I know you had some comments for the applicant, also I believe we received, you know, a letter from them in response to your comments. If you could perhaps just summarize that as far as what your comments were in the responses, and if there's any outstanding issues that you may have that you'd like to bring to the commission.
Sure. Generally, all of my comments were addressed. There were a couple of things that I wanted to raise, or just kind of make the commission aware of. One is, so a couple of things have, let me, that, so the biggest sort of question or issue that we had was regarding addressing the existing outfalls that are on the site that were installed, so we are glad that they're modifying those to address that. And I did also speak with some town departments about some questions that I had about the use of the field and that sort of thing, and potential impacts, and generally, the response, some of the information I got was the same as the information that was included in your packets, and that was a positive response. Couple of things, one is, and I'm not sure, maybe somebody said it and I missed it, but the lighting is the subject of a variance that's on for next week's ZBA agenda because of the height of the lights, and that is, we have approved those at other fields in town.
What's the heights, the height of the lights on the, what was it, seventeen?
That's right, the Class of Seventy-Six field.
Is that, is the light, the height that you're proposing on this field the same as? Is that, is the light, the height that you're proposing on this field the same as that's on that field?
I believe so. I think they're at least 70 feet. This will be a 70-foot tower.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And then the other thing, two other things. One is, and it was in my notes to you, the fire marshal, I did hear from the fire marshal's office last week, they did have some additional comments and questions sort of in regard to their requirements around, and I won't get into it too heavily, but around the fact that it's an enclosed space because it is fenced in, and I think also a question about the bleacher area. So if you could maybe touch on that briefly for the commission?
Sure. So to just take them in order, in terms of the enclosed space, the gateways, the way they were depicted on the drawing may have indicated that they opened in only one direction, and that's not the case.
They'll open out.
They'll be able to open outward. We think we're beyond sort of the requirement in terms of the spacing and the number of gates that we have. The second, in terms of the older existing bleachers that are on site, the intent over time would be to perhaps have sort of updated renovated seating. We're actually willing to proceed in any number of stages to find some acceptable solution between now and then with the timing of how the bleachers would be sort of fixed in context to this project. And that could include us, after having them inspected by a licensed engineer, bringing them up to current specification, tearing them out entirely, potentially putting in some portable bleachers that would be sort of seating up to 100 or less, or something beyond that if it were a more permanent installation.
Okay, and yeah, so that had to do, I think, also with the, depending on the types of sports that were going to occur there, because different sports yield different numbers of people and what would be required. But my recommendation to the commission is just approval by the fire marshal's office prior to construction. So then if you work something out with him, whether it's to phase out over time or not, then I have the okay from them. And then two other things. One has to do with the scoreboard, and this is sort of an aside. So because we currently have a moratorium on LED signage, an electronic signage, and it's anticipated that we'll be moving towards prohibiting them, this is actually, this is not the first time this has come up. This came up with another, somewhere else recently, where another sports team that wanted to put up a scoreboard. And what I anticipate, so I've been sort of thinking about this, I ran it by the law department, what I anticipate I will be recommending to you, and we don't need to get into this tonight, but I just want to let you know, what I anticipate I'll be recommending to you is that we exempt from our signage regulations signage that's not visible from a town road or from another property. So things like scoreboards and similar types of, and we're, I'm still working on your LED reg and gas stations, some other things that we might have to look at, but really, the issue came up, if we can't see it from the road or from any other property, what's the concern? So that's probably how that will get addressed. They're aware of it. Their other option in the meantime is to either construct the, either reuse the existing sign or just construct the supports for it and hope that it gets addressed. So that's that. And then the third thing, I was just hoping you could tell the commission quickly, is there is a fair amount of material, it's not an insane amount, but a fair amount of material that needs to get excavated out of here, and I think the intention is to keep it elsewhere on campus. So what I would want to understand is sort of what the intention for that material, where it's going and what the intention for it is.
Sure, no, I'd be happy, Mrs. Hand, to address that. So the first choice for that material would be to move it across the street to the former Gallagher property that we had purchased some years ago. There is the hope in the sort of longer arc of time to see potentially softball field there, and that topsoil could be very useful in that space. In speaking with our head of grounds, one of the options would be to grade it in sort of a long block that would be potentially three, four to maybe six feet high, and then grow some sort of cover material, natural cover on it for erosion control in the meantime. As a backup beyond that, if there were too much material or we thought that it in any way proved difficult on that site, and we don't think so, we'd look to use the field by the fire tower, which we had done so for a similar purpose some years ago.
Thank you. Does that cover everything, Mrs. Hand?
Yeah, thank you.
Good. Questions from the commission on the application? Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions, and, you know, I'm going to ask this question, it's, you know, more for the public than myself, but, you know, with the turf fields, there's a lot of controversy about, you know, health concerns. And so I was wondering if you could just comment on that and maybe describe what that, you know, cushioning material is, where it's from, and, you know, what your experience is.
Sure. This is an actual sample of the turf material, and one of Mrs. Hand's initial comments was, you know, the migration, the potential migration, so of the infill material. This is the actual, you know, fabric with the plastic polyethylene grass blades. This encases the sand and rubber infill, sand and crumb rubber. The backing is solid. There's no punched holes or anything. Some of the products out on the market have a punched hole in the back that would potentially allow for a little migration. This does not allow for any migration down. Even if it were to get through this, it'd have to go stone, you know, to pipe to another. So it's filtered like three or four times before the water itself gets out. As far as the safety of crumb rubber and sand, that's kind of been in the news, there's been dozens of studies, you know, that even the state of Connecticut Department of Health has referenced, they've done some in 2010, kind of reaffirmed everything in 2015. So we still feel it's the safest product on the market, both, you know, from an environmental perspective and from, you know, the athletes. There's also been studies done by the NCA with regard to athlete safety, lower body injury, stuff like that. This product has been made to replicate natural grass as closely as possible, but without the problems where it becomes muddy and slippery and everything else, it maintains its footing. Now that I've said all that, I did bring Andrew Dyjak with FieldTurf, who is going to be putting this product down. If there's anything that I've missed, Andrew, you're welcome to, at this point, to address.
Rob actually did a very good job explaining it. If you could please just identify yourself, sir, if you would.
Sorry, Andrew Dyjak with FieldTurf. D-Y-J-A-K. Not too many of those around here. He did a really good job explaining it. The biggest thing for folks in Connecticut is the state Department of Public Health has already come out twice and said, I'm sorry, and said that there is no issue with crumb rubber. There was a, it was brought into a committee this year, and it wasn't even voted out of committee for the full senate to hear it. They've taken studies with liquid, meaning rainwater going into the turf system and then out of it. The water coming out of the system is actually cleaner than going in because it acts like a giant filter. The next thing they looked at was offgassing. The state of Connecticut looked at that, and running on a urban or suburban road actually has more carcinogens in it than actually playing on a turf field. And then the last thing was ingestion, and there's no cause for concern whatsoever. The synthetic turf field that's being proposed has passed toy safety standard tests, it's called the EN 71 test. Things that pass that test are like pacifiers and toothbrushes and children's toys, et cetera. So there's no migration at all, there's no offgassing, there's no impact to the water quality, and even if, God forbid, somebody swallowed it, there's no leaching within the stomach. So from our perspective, it's the safest, and the state of Connecticut agrees.
And you gave us a copy, or the applicant gave us a copy of the fact sheet from the Connecticut, you know, Department of Environmental Protection that essentially states that. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Hand, but this type of field, we have that installed on similar type of fields on our two fields at the high school, is that correct, at the high schools?
Yeah, both of them have. One approved in the last, I would say, five years, and one's a bit old, one's probably over 10 years old.
Thank you. Other commission members? Seeing none, any comments from any members of the public on this application? Seeing none, unless your gentleman have any further comments to make, I entertain a motion on the application from the commission.
Did have one clarification earlier on the height of the light poles, it was 80 feet. I think it was mentioned 70, the existing light poles, that's actually 80 feet. I just wanted to enter that.
80 feet, and that's what your variance states. Okay, thank you. Again, at this point, Tom, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to approve a site plan for Cho Rosemary Hall to construct an artificial turf athletic field in the location of an existing natural grass athletic field at 55 North Elm Street, has shown on plans entitled Cho Rosemary Hall, 333 Christian Street, Wallingford, Connecticut Soccer Field, March 2019. Proposed field reconstruction dated March 15, 2019, revised to April 2, 2019. Subject to the following conditions. Number one, comments of the Town of Wallingford Town Planner dated 4/18/19, and the applicant's response dated April 30, 2019. Number two, conditions and comments of the Town of Wallingford Fire Marshal dated 4/10/19, and final review and approval of final plans prior to construction as it pertains to site access and spectator seating by the Town of Wallingford Fire Marshal.
We have the motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes, yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening. Thank you, gentlemen. Brings us to our next application, it's a site plan modification, parking, circulation, and landscaping, Wave Car Wash 3 LLC at 968 Yale Avenue. Again, if the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for his presentation. And Mr. Madarazzo, if you'd please note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have correspondence dated May 1, 2019, signed by Casey Hand, Town Planner. We have a few sets of plans. Dated, one dated May 9, 2019, one dated May 7, 2019, and one dated May 1, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. If the applicant would please introduce himself and his presentation.
Yes, I'm Edward Sterenberg, member of the Wave Car Wash LLC.
Sir, if you could just pull that just a little bit closer to me, if you would.
Oh, Sterenberg, S-T-E-R-E-M-B-E-R-G. I'm here to discuss the, I don't know if the committee had an issue with the stacking on the site, concerns about the layout side.
Sure, I guess if you would just give a quick overview, just for the record, as far as what your, what the application is requesting.
Okay, I'm requesting to change the direction of the traffic flow from the current flow to better serve the, better stack in front of the automatic bays that I'm proposing, to better line up for the queuing, for the self-serve bays. And the equipment that I'm proposing, the one drawback with it is it cleans the car really well, but it cleans it slow. So at my Newington location, in New Brit location, I found that two, three cars at most would wait because it takes about eight to 10 minutes per car. People are very impatient today. They do like the car wash, but they've learned that, you know, if there's a couple of cars in line, that they don't like to join that line. So at the other sites, and also this site, I don't see, I don't feel that the traffic will, you know, spill out onto Yale Ave. I feel that the site will serve the proposed traffic.
How many, with your plan right now, how many cars can you stack coming into your site without, you know, going onto Yale Avenue?
We can stack 16 cars. One car in front of each of the bays, and then a lineup of about 10 cars along the entry lane.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Hand, any comments on the application?
So this, you may remember, you saw this two years ago-ish. This is actually pretty similar to what the original approved queuing configuration and circulation configuration was. The owner before Mr. Sterenberg had sort of of his own volition changed the, changed it to go the other way, and he came back in for an application to address that. But then I think Mr. Sterenberg bought the property and decided that the original configuration probably worked better for him. I believe there are two touchless, is it two touchless, that are in bays one and two, just so the commission's aware. And then we did talk about things like overflow and queuing. So you'll see in this plan, there is an added kind of way to get back around, like through, and then there is also the ability, or there should also be the ability to bypass the, if you are waiting in too long of a line, there appears to be the ability to bypass at some point. And I, we did also talk about, we had talked about this with the previous owner, additional landscaping, so there is a proposal for a pretty significant landscaped island, and it does help also to kind of direct the traffic where it's supposed to go.
Thank you. Commission members with questions for the applicant? Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I live, you know, pretty close, I drive by this, you know, on the weekend, you know, when you have your busy periods. I've never seen any, you know, stacking or queuing. Have, has the owner, previous owner, or yourself experienced any of that?
Are you saying issues with it?
Yeah.
No, I don't expect any.
Right. I do think the plan is very good, but, you know, again, I've never seen an issue there.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Any other commission members? Seeing none, again, any members of the public who'd like to speak on the application, please come forward and name an address. Seeing none, I'd bring it back to the commission. Mrs. Hand, I may.
I am also just recommending a $1,000 sedimentation and erosion control bond for the, it'll be for the completion of the landscaping.
Thank you. That being said, do we have the listeners, no additional questions from the commission? I entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a site plan for Wave Car Wash 3 LLC to modify the site circulation, layout, queuing, and existing car wash at 968 Yale Avenue, has shown on plans entitled improvement location survey, existing conditions mapped, and proposed improvements land now informally. Wave Car Wash 3 LLC, 968 Yale Avenue, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated June 21, 2017, revised to April 25, 2019. Subject to the following conditions. Number one, comments of the Town of Wallingford Town Planner dated May 1, 2019. And number two, applicant shall post a $1,000 S and E bond for landscaping as recommended and required by the Town of Wallingford Town Planner.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening. Brings us to our next item on the agenda, it's a site plan, site plan. Food truck to be used as permanent building, Roscoe's Traveling Smokehouse at 211 South Colony Street. Again, if the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for the presentation. Mr. Madarazzo, please note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have correspondence dated May 2, 2019, signed by Casey Hand, Town Planner.
Good evening. I'm Bernie Stromola from Cardinal Engineering, C-E-R-M-O-L-A. I'm here with David Silvia, Roscoe's Smokehouse Restaurant.
My last name is S-I-L-V-I-A, Sylvia.
My last name is S.I.L.V.I.A., Sylvia.
That's at 211 South Colony Street. He's looking to get approval for a storage trailer, actually a food service trailer.
It's a mobile vending kitchen, yes.
It's a zone CB12, which this, which this lot is not a conforming lot, and we're trying to, we're trying to do designers, the zoning requirements for a conforming lot and a, and a non-conforming lot, if you get my understanding. What we're, we came up with 1,700 square feet of landscape area. We have the acquired amount of parking spaces, which is seven. The landscape area is comparable to a conforming lot, as far as area, it's actually more, this is 20% of the actual lot area, as opposed to a conforming lot would be 10% for a conforming lot area. We are showing privacy fence around the trailer. We're also, we are, one driveway is getting removed, and the other is getting narrowed to a 24-foot standard.
That's it?
Yep, that's it.
So, the bottom line is you're eliminating a curb cut, and you're providing a, really a substantial amount of landscaping on what is a, right now, a lot that has very little landscaping.
Correct.
Or no landscape. The, the trailer that you're talking about, again, that you're, I guess, planning to locate here right now, is that the trailer that's behind the building right now?
Ah, yeah, we, we moved it on the advice of-
Yeah, but it, but it's, is it, is it now the one that's behind the building that, or no?
No, it's not behind the, we moved it back to our prep site.
Okay, so it's off of-
Until the meeting, we got approval, hopefully.
Okay. As far as, you could just give us an idea as far as the size of the trailer?
Yes, it's a 30-foot trailer with a 5-foot tongue. It's completely state-of-the-art, mobile kitchen, self-contained, no need for any type of electricity, or we have waste tanks and we have water fill tanks, freshwater fill tanks. It has, it comes complete with a porch and properly Health Department-approved, vented $18,000 Southern Pride smoker. It's also a completely, like I said, on the inside, completely self-contained. We have concession, I'm sorry, convection ovens, steam tables, we have refrigeration and freezer, we have hot water, we have, like I said, it's completely self-contained, mobile and state-of-the-art. Essentially, it's a better kitchen than we have inside of the building, that's for sure. And it's already been approved by the Health Department at Wallingford.
Good, thank you.
A hundred, hundred score.
Thank you. Mrs. Hand, as far as comments on the application?
Sure. So, as you are aware, we have very specific mobile food vendor requirements that were developed a few years ago, and that's not really this, so those were, those regulations were developed for a mobile food vendor, where it's mobile, and we had talked about this at that time, well, if somebody wanted to locate on their site permanently, they could, they'd have to get like a site plan, like a building would be. But I think when we initially mailed this out to you as a potential administrative application, a couple of you expressed some questions and concerns about kind of what is this and how are we treating it? So, in some ways, it's storage. In some ways, it's storage of their big trailer, and our only real requirement for storage is that it be screened from view. In some ways, it's part of the restaurant, because it's, the smoker is used for cooking the food that's being served in the restaurant. So, in some ways, it's like a little outbuilding for the restaurant. So, basically, what I conveyed to them was that they should treat it like both. So, there is the screening provided that they proposed, and they're also bringing the site substantially towards compliance. So, that was the other recommendation, is that if we were, if someone were adding on to a building or something like that, they would be expected to do that. So, other than the accessible parking space and one other parking space, the, the rest of it is being, the, the front landscaping requirement is being entirely accomplished, and it's substantially more in compliance than the non-conforming condition that's there now. So, I think this is a real, and I think both the town and DOT will be thrilled that they're closing a curb cut, and they're narrowing the other very large one down to a compliant 24 feet. So, I think this is a real, I, I think this plan is, really accomplishes kind of what commissioners were looking for, that, that expressed some concern, I mean, you obviously speak for it, but I think this is a good plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Hand. Commission members like to make any comments on the application? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
I did want just to clarify, because I, I saw the trailer, before you moved it, is that trailer, would that trailer move to go to an event for someone, or is it, so it, it's mobile for off-site facilities, but when it's not mobile at, at some other location, it, it's part of the restaurant, part of the building?
Correct. It would be moving quite often, to be honest with you. The, the, the plan is, like I said, I mean, the, our original reason for moving into this location was not because we wanted a, to remodel a 50-year-old dilapidated grease trap, it was because we need a place to go. We needed a place to, to have a prep site for our mobile concession vending. We will be doing, doing no vending, obviously, out of, out of the, the parking lot at the restaurant. It's completely, that, that, that restaurant is there to support our, you know, we're going to the Biggie, and to the North Haven Fair, and the Durham Fair, and all those kinds of things.
I think you answered my second question. So, when it's on-site, it'll strictly be used by staff, the public wouldn't go there to-
Correct.
Right, so that they'd go into the restaurant?
Correct.
Okay. And the, the way the map, the way the plan shows, you'll be able to act, get it in and out without issue?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. I think, I think, I would share, I'm interested because of the, the way, it, it's not, it's a quasi-food truck, but it's not, because it's a trailer.
Right.
But it's, it, being part of the restaurant is just unique, and I, and I, I had, I will share with you, I had a conversation with Mrs. Hand about, you know, what, because we have restaurants that have food trucks that aren't on the site. This is a request, but it's none of, it's a food truck slash trailer, so when it's on-site, it stores its trailer, when it's off-site, it's a food truck.
Correct.
That's, that's, that's the delineation, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Other commission members? Yes, Mr. Hand?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did you give any consideration to storing the trailer behind the building as opposed to-
We did.
Okay.
We did. Actually, the first visit from the fire marshal, he actually suggested that, as long as we were 10 feet off through the building, he would have no, no issues with it. Our only issue, I think, that we would face is the fact that the Amtrak, the property line that Amtrak owns into, it's not the whole, although it's a gigantic parking lot in the back, the Amtrak owns right up to about 15 feet, I believe, off the building. So, we, we talked about considering trying to get easement from Amtrak, so we could actually have it behind the building, that would probably eliminate the screening issue, because it wouldn't be viewable from the street. But, like I said, that would have to be, I think-
He's on look into that, into getting the easement, but that will take some time, so this is-
Yeah.
In the meantime.
Yeah, but, but as you, as you said, it would be a much better situation for us if we could actually put it right behind the building, you know?
Yeah, that was my only question, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Mrs. Hand, any final comments?
Yeah, just to address some of the, or build off of some of the comments that were made, yeah, I, I think it's a good point that Mr. Fitzsimmons made, is that since this is not approved as a mobile food truck and doesn't comply with our mobile food truck requirements, you wouldn't be able to sell out of the food truck there. And just for the commission's purposes, we do have restaurants in town that have food trucks that they park in places that they're not supposed to, that have come to my attention recently, and so that's something that, you know, this is the example of, it's, they were able to comply with the parking requirements, and they were able to comply with the storage and screening requirements without having the truck take up spaces it's not supposed to, or areas of the site it's not supposed to. And that's why this is allowable here versus, so if someone has just enough parking spaces for their restaurant, they can't use their parking spaces to store some of the food, food trucks, so.
Thank you. I guess I just have just one or two comments. I think like Mr. Fitzsimmons, when this came out as an administrative proposal, administrative proposal, when I looked at it, you're looking to use a food truck as a permanent building, I kind of scratched my head and said, what the heck is that?
It's not your typical food truck.
Exactly. Yeah, after your discussions with, you know, with our town planner, with Mrs. Hand, I, I think what was determined and what's being, you know, presented here is a, to say it's a significant improvement on the property is a gross understatement. So, I, I certainly commend you for what you're doing, and certainly I support the application, but with that, I'd ask for a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to approve a site plan for Roscoe's Traveling Smokehouse to store a trailer, food truck on a site, and use a portion of the structure as part of the existing restaurant on the site for the sole purpose of cooking food to be prepared in the restaurant, and make associated site plan parking improvements shown on plans entitled Site Plan, property of David Sylvia, 211 South Colony Road, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated April 5, 2019, revised to May 8, 2019, subject to the following conditions. Number one, comments of the Town of Wallingford Town Planner dated May 2, 2019. Number two, final landscaping plan, including tree type, to be subject to Town of Wallingford Town Planner approval. And number three, applicant shall post a S and E bond in the amount of $1,500 as recommended and required by the Town of Wallingford Planning and Zoning Office.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons, we have a motion on the application, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kohan, voting beginning with Mr. Kohan.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved, have a good evening. You need an applause. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck.
And it brings us to our next item on our agenda, it's a 8-24 application, it's a review of our six-year capital budget from 2019 to 2025. And Mrs. Hand, if you would please just, if you would take the wheel on this for a moment.
So, this is 8-24 referral, that's a referral, anytime the town spends money on making public improvements, it needs to be reviewed by you in your capacity as the planning commission. So, this would be a recommendation to the council for approval or not. Essentially, what this is, is the programs, it's, it's capital improvements the town's making over the next six years, so sidewalk improvements, there's some guard rail, mostly, it's, it's usually sidewalk improvements, paving, and bridge replacements. There's some guard rail improvements on here, too.
Thank you, Mrs. Hand. Does any commission members have any questions? I know she asked us all if we had questions, that if we thought the town engineer would appear for questions. I don't see him here, so I suspect no one had any questions, but if we do now?
Yeah, I, it's, it's really kind of a comment instead of a question, so I didn't, you know, and I've, I've talked to Mr. Walter Midas about this as well in the past, but, but this is really just a, you know, anticipated expenses. I mean, this, this is not cast in concrete for the next six years, and this, this is kind of a, you know, evolving document, so, and it looks fine, but-
I think it's more of a roll, it's more of a rolling plan, I think is probably the best way to describe it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Like, Mrs. Hand, we would need to make a motion to-
Recommend.
Recommend.
Approval.
Recommend approval? Okay, I entertain a motion to recommend approval of the six-year capital budget.
Mr. Chairman, at the request of the Office of the Mayor and the recommendation of the Town Planner, I recommend the commission approved the six-year capital budget for fiscal years 2019 through 2025, as submitted by the Office of the Mayor.
Do we have a motion? Ah, excuse me, do we have a second on the recommendation, I'm sorry?
Second.
We have a second, voting beginning with Mr. Kohan.
Yes.
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 And yes. And it brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is a discussion. It's a determination of use for Muddy Roots Farms at 175 Northford Road. And if the gentleman who-
So, there is, there is also an 8A, but let's do this one first, because he's been waiting so patiently in the audience, and then we can go back to 8A.
Okay.
It's only on the agenda, there's not an attachment.
Oh, okay. If you'd please, sir, introduce yourself and bring us up to date as far as what you're requesting from us.
Absolutely. My name's Chris Wellington, I'm the, one of the co-owners of Muddy Roots Farm on 175 Northford Road in Wallingford. It's property owned by Gel Corporation. The reason I'm here is to basically get your blessing that renovating the existing dairy parlor at 175 Northford Road into a state-inspected processing, poultry processing facility would fall under the accessory of our, of our main use of the space, which is, we raise about 1,000 birds a year right now, process them all on-site, as well as about, we do a half acre roughly of vegetable production. The, the main reason for us approaching you is because we, we feel like we've exceeded the limits set by the slaughter exemption. Currently, we, we have to sell all our birds on a pre-order basis. We slaughter 14 times a year, we do 70 birds each, each processing day, we're already sold out for the entire year, and we haven't even slaughtered our first bird. So, this would be our next step in the process. You guys are the first hurdle to get over, as far as the USDA is concerned, so.
And just so I'm clear, all the birds that are going to be slaughtered are birds that you raise on the, on the farm, correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Hand, any comments on, on this request?
The issue, or the question came up recently of accessory uses, and you did have something in your packets this month for another application from Attorney Small about accessory uses. I think this one's pretty clear, because if you look at our definition of farm in Section 2.2, which is the definition section of the regs, it specifically says, specifically defines, so I should say, this is, this is in a rural residential zone, so farms are permitted, industrial agriculture, you know, industrial agriculture is not permitted, other industrial types of uses are not permitted. So, that's what Mr. Wellington and I talked about, is making sure there was a clear differentiation there, and that this really fell within what we allow as a farm. And so, within our definition of farm, the regulation says, allows, it, the definition allows for accessory uses, including the storage, treatment, and processing, and sales of such items produced solely on the premises. So, that would include, as, as long as all the birds are birds that are raised on the farm, then they would be able to, then, at least my position is that they would be able to process them on-site under that regulation. I think he understands that if they were to go beyond that, then we'd be talking about something else. And then also, at the local level, I did talk to the Water and Sewer Division, because this property is located within our watershed, and Mr. Wellington and I talked about this also, is that obviously, next, if the commission agrees that this is an accessory use permitted as part of his farm use, then we still need to talk to Water and Sewer and find out what may or may not be allowed or required under our watershed regs, and then obviously, the Health Department has to get involved.
So, the bottom line is all we're doing right now is just having discussion, making determination of what at least is being- if what at least is being, uh, considered by the farm, if in fact that's an accessory use. If we make that determination, then there's certainly a, not a long process, but there's a process with different entities that need to, uh, come into play before we would even see an application for what the, what they're planning to do, correct?
Right, right.
Okay. Commission members, any comments? Yes, Mr. Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have, I think I just cut out. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I, I have a question for the applicant, um, if that's all right. Um, the, uh, your customer base, if you were to expand to about the, the twenty thousand birds or so, um, what is your anticipated customer base?
Currently, we can only sell to end users. Um, you have to be the one consuming that. Uh, the, the way the, the, the custom slaughter exemption is written is when you fill out our pre-order form, you take ownership of the animal before we kill it. We're providing you a service. That would alleviate the, the necessity for that, for that whole pre-order system. It would allow me, instead of selling, having to sell you a whole bird, it would allow me to be able to sell you a package of breasts, a package of wings. It would also allow us to sell to the same restaurants that we sell some of our produce to. It would allow us to get into institutions. I don't foresee us ever even coming close to twenty thousand birds a year. Um, it's just my wife and I that work on the farm. But we would like to feel comfortable that we can expand into, uh, whatever type of demand we're offered.
Do you foresee, uh, grocery stores or-
No.
Any of that type of production? Just, just asking. Um, based on those representations, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, comments from our town planner and, uh, the, uh, town attorney, to me, it sounds incidental to a farm, which would be an accessory use.
Other commission members? Mr. Cohen.
Um, yes, I agree this is an accessory use. And I just want to make a comment that I did have one of your slaughtered birds last year and it was very good.
Thank you, sir.
I guess before I go around to everyone else, I guess can, can we say that the commission is, uh, in general agreement that in fact this is a, uh, an accessory use?
Agree.
So that being the case, I believe, uh, Mrs. Hand, that's all we really need to do. Is that correct?
Yeah, um, the only other thing I would say, can you give us some sense of like what you think the max might become someday?
That's a very difficult question to answer. Uh, it, it would be, uh, it, just to, to get the, the space up to, um, the state-certified standards would probably take us two to five years. Um, I would say our max comfortably would be ten thousand birds. And that's total, that's total for the year, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I guess with that, you have our, our direction and we concur that it's an accessory use and you can begin your process of, uh, going through the various, uh, agencies, commissions, uh, in order to, uh, you know, go forward with what you're planning.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good luck.
Mrs. Hand, you mentioned that there was a eight, or a eight-A?
On the agenda?
Yeah, I don't-
Water sewer.
I don't see an eight-A.
It's on the notes.
Maybe it got added after your packets went out?
She just put it in the notes.
Well-
Uh-huh, it's on the notes. So we would have to, uh, make a motion to, uh-
Rule five?
We-
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion to waive rule five, uh, in order to, uh, add, uh, an eight-twenty-four determination for the water and sewer phosphorus project. Do we have a motion to do that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we waive rule five of our rules and, uh, in order to put an eight-twenty-four on at the request of the Law Department for, um, taking action on the water and sewer phosphorus project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions. Uh, and Mrs. Hand, if you would just please give us a background on this.
So you approved this as the planning and, you approved this as a planning and zoning application, as a site plan application. It was, um, basically construction that needs to be done, facilities that need to be built at the water and sewer divisions for the phosphorus project. Um, it sort of came up that there was sort of a gray area in that it wasn't approved as an eight-dash-twenty-four referral. Clearly, you're already aware of it and already approved it. So my suggestion to the town, to the law department was that the commission just make a determination that your site plan approval also is considered your eight-dash-twenty-four recommendation.
Thank you. So at this point in time, I guess I'd entertain a, uh, a recommendation for approve this, uh, eight-dash-twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman, I move, based upon input from the Town of Wallingford Town Planner, that the commission treat the approval of, of February 11th of this year for the water and sewer phosphorus project to clarify that the approval of the project also served as the planning and zoning commission's recommendation of approval has a referral under Connecticut General Statute H dash eight-dash-twenty-four.
We have a, uh, recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. And Mrs. Hand, at this point in time, I turn the, uh, rest of the meeting over to you for bond releases and reports, noting that it's, uh, nine-twenty. Mr. Fitzsimmons needs to be out by nine-thirty, so if we won't enjoy his company for the entire meeting.
Okay. All right, so, um, bond releases and reductions. I'm only recommending release of item number ten, seven oh one Center Street.
Do we have a motion, uh, as recommended by our town planner to release, uh, item number ten? The seven oh one Center Street?
Mr. Chairman, at the recommendation of the town planner, I move that the commission approve the bond release held for Simpson Village under special permit four oh four dash oh six, as recommended by the town planner and approved by the town engineer.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Moving on.
Okay.
Reports of officers and staff.
Item number fourteen is, um, a memo from, uh, Attorney Small, our corporation counsel. Um, the revised, the town's revised code of ethics, um, and a new ordinance, um, require you to have a tra, all appointed boards and commissions to attend a training. Um, the training is on the Freedom of Information Act and the Code of Ethics. Um, the training has been scheduled for June 6th at six thirty P.M. here in the council chambers. Um, it is required, so she has, um, requested that if you're not able to attend, that you let her know. If you're not able to attend, there is the opportunity to wa, I believe, watch a video of it.
Thank you.
So alternatively, you can let me know and I will let her know.
Okay. And if possible, Mrs. Hand, if you'd just send us out a, uh, a reminder on that, uh, you know, one week prior.
Okay. Um, and I do also, I think you got a copy of the ordinance itself, but if you didn't and you'd like it, let me know. Okay, um, administrative approvals. I'll just, um, see if you have any questions or concerns, comments. They were all pretty straightforward, I think. Uh, ZBA decisions from April. Uh, there were two variances approved. One was for, um, athletic field lighting at Frickman Park, similar to what we talked about tonight. Um, one was for, um, several variances for an attached garage on Algonquin. And then, uh, one was denied for, um, a, a special exception was denied for a very large garage at twenty-nine Pearson, which had already received some special exceptions. Um, and then coming up this month, um, is the light pole height, as discussed, for, um, Choate. Uh, and then, um, the other one, I guess I would point out is item number four, which is a special exception request, um, for an expansion of an existing daycare at Gaylord Farm Road. Um, that's, they want to do like a summer program and it's a little bigger than it was previously allowed. And then finally, zoning enforcement log. Um, we've been working on this to try to make it a little more user-friendly, um, to try to break down the categories a little bit differently. Um, so, or I should say Amy has been working on it. I can't actually take any credit for it. Um, but, so if you have any thoughts about that, let us know. Or if there are any questions, comments, concerns, or violations you want to talk about, let us know. We also do have a fairly long list of closed-out items this month because in that process, she also was able, there are some things that have kind of been lingering around that really were ready to get closed out or other things she's been able to close out. Um, and sort of the focus this past couple months has been largely dealers and repairs facilities.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for, uh, Mrs. Hand on our zoning log? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, through you, question on the, uh, zoning log. I have, uh, made a number of complaints from, uh, other folks, on behalf of other folks, regarding dumpsters. Dumpsters that are in handicap parking spots, dumpsters that aren't screened. Where would those be listed under this complaint logs? I don't see dumpsters as a category.
Um, I, perhaps they haven't made it on here yet. Um, if you want, we can talk about the specifics. Um, so the, it's possible that they would be under special, no, they're not under site plan. So I will find, I will get the answer for that, for you. Um, and, um, yeah, so if there, and if there are specific ones you want me to look into, let me know and we'll follow up further. But if you've told Amy, then-
I, I've reported them, that's, and I, I don't see, you know, and I, and I think if I put through you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, a number of them are, it's a handicap parking spot, has a dumpster in it. So it's a, like, to me, it's egregious. The fact it's not screened is a secondary issue, but dumpsters and handicap spots are, are, you know,
Yeah.
Parking is enough issue, but that's not what they're for.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks.
All right.
Anyone else? Missy, I, I just have a quick question on bond releases. I know several meetings ago, I believe there was a request for a bond release from Tractor Supply. And again, we did not approve that. And, uh, has anyone contacted anyone i- i- as far as cleaning up that, the swale and all of that?
Yeah, I, um, I, I, my understanding is that the environmental planner has been in contact with them about that. I did drive by it myself recently and it seems to be getting worse instead of better, so I can reach out to them also.
Okay, as long as the environmental planner is attempting to address that. Good. Uh, any other comments, questions? If not, uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, sorry, I, I just had one, one question. You know, I, I accidentally attended the, uh, town council ordinance meeting and they accidentally, um, were talking about outdoor dining, increasing the area there. And I think there was something in the paper.
About what?
Outdoor dining area in downtown. Is, is that something that, you know, this commission should be weighing in on? Or do we regulate that?
I remember, I think the ordinance came into play around, maybe a little before I started working for the town. Um, and the way it's always been, the way it's been separated out is that the ordinance oversees outdoor dining in public, in the public way. So, because the commission, the planning and zoning commission, has the oversight over the private properties, so, um, but the town council basically, and the ordinance allows them the oversight over outdoor dining in the, in the public right-of-way. So, um, it hasn't, it's basically not been included in, um, or required any zoning applications. So I, um, so typically, if one of, if a restaurant wants to have outdoor dining in the public-owned space, which really the only, I don't even think I've ever gotten inquiries about doing it anywhere outside of the town center because it's really the only place where the buildings are right up against the sidewalk. Um, so that's really what we're talking about is in downtown or in the town center. Um, and we do, um, so, so that goes straight to the town council. It's not, there's, the parking requirements don't get involved. Now our parking requirement's exempt outdoor dining anyhow, so it kind of fits nicely. Um, but if you wanted, you know, that's probably more a question for the commission than for me, if you wanted to sort of have the oppor, have, have input on that or wanted me to pass along any, any input on that. Um, I know, I, I know that, um, the, the brewery has asked about that a little bit, uh, has asked about that because they have some space in front, but it kind of goes into the, the town right-of-way and they, there are requirements for, um, they have to make sure that there's still enough sidewalk for a wheelchair and to comply with accessibility requirements.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. Uh, you know, I, I do think it, in the future, maybe we could, you know, discuss it because that, it, it does sound like that really falls under our jurisdiction for, you know, regulating that, especially, uh, you know, if the brewery had, you know, uh, came to us with that, you know, detail in their application.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's something that would have to go to the town council no matter what because it's town-owned land, obviously. Um, but if the commission felt I can explore whether or not it'd be appropriate for it also to come to you guys.
If you would do that, Mrs. Hand.
Thank you.
If there's no other business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
I have a second. Second, Mr. Cohen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. We're adjourned. Thank you.